Pardon me, to order.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we thank you for the day and thank you for the sun and we thank you for the weather. God, I just pray that you be over this group of people that make decisions for our city. And I just pray that you guide them, bless them, and give them wisdom. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There any changes to the agenda this evening?
We do need to add an executive session for attorney clients for which there should be a total of one.
I move to approve the agenda as a minute.
It's been moved by Commissioner Winston, by Commissioner Jackson to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, this is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We request that you state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comment to three minutes. Any public that wants to comment? Hearing none, seeing none. Moving on to proclamations, recognitions, recognizing O'Connor animal shelter volunteers.
You want to go ahead and start? Do you want to go back to the other?
I just wanted to do the action agenda and some back.
Moving on to the minutes of the January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I meant to approve the minutes of January eighteen, twenty-three.
The move by Commissioner Beldon, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the minutes of the January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Our time, motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number two. The move by Commissioner Beldon, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number two. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Let's go on to reports. Managers report.
Mayors, we did receive some training on the use of the Everbridge app this week and then it's an app that we're going to use along with this county. It will eventually take the place of text caster. So we're still in the process of getting templates prepared or viewed by staff to make sure that it's ready to go for us. And we had that presentation from Sheila and James pulling a little bit, a couple of meetings ago on it. And so we decided to go ahead and move forward with that. Also, this week, we provided written testimony in opposition to House Bill two zero eight three. And that bill was related to preempting cities from having a vacant property registry, which is in direct conflict with what our housing study requested that us do, that we do, so that we can have the potential to turn some properties pretty quickly and economically to be able to be used for housing. And then it's also in conflict with some home rural powers. And then also, we had mentioned briefly House Bill twenty-one oh eight last time on a sales tax holiday for school supplies. That does have a hearing here this Thursday, so let you know how that would turns out. We're still continuing to monitor that. Other than that, spent a few days last weekend to Pico with local government day at the Capitol, got to visit with Senator Bowers. It's not, that was good. Visit with her a little bit. And then also spend some time with the lead governing body interviewing candidates for the new executive director position. So we'll hopefully hear soon on this election and announce the process of that. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
What purpose would? In regard to twenty eighty-three, sorry to bore everyone here, but why is that, why would they push forward with that? What purpose would that serve?
I think that from the, from what I just heard in the hearing today, the summary of the hearing was that there were legislators that were concerned about charging fees associated with that rate vacant property registry. And then ultimately, they did believe that there was value in having a registry. The way the bill was originally written, it would say you can't keep the registry and you can't charge fees for any registry. So I think the politics of amendments as it goes through.
I mean, it would seem like it would be good for a city to have a decent idea about what.
What properties and maybe it's in, particularly through operations that happens anyway, we kind of talked about it this morning. Bruno has a pretty good handle on which ones are vacant and becoming dilapidated. We know from our utility billing services pretty much which ones have had idle utilities for a long time. So those lists are kind of inherently created anyway through our normal operations.
Do we want to go back to proclamations? I don't even want to continue this. I have a portion. We can, recognizing O'Connor animal shelter volunteers.
I just ask if we could get something to recognize my volunteers because they do so much for me. And so I couldn't do it without them because they do the weekends and the holidays for me. And when I went off, I appreciate them so much. So Haley. Thank you so much. Mary Lou. And Mary. And Victoria. Thank you. Well, I appreciate the girl fun. Always do. Thank you so much.
Picture of all of them with you. Do what? Can we get a picture of all of them with you? Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't have that.
One in the five, huh? Really do appreciate the time and effort that you put into the animal shelter. I know that it's a labor of love and I really feel fortunate that being able to have the shelter gives us an opportunity to to take care of some of these animals that might not otherwise have that bright of a future. So I know that we've personally benefited. We've got a shelter dog at our house that is very much part of our family. So we really appreciate it very much.
We appreciate her. Yes.
Y'all are more than welcome to stick around, but if you wanted to take off, you're sure good to do so.
Tony, some of your volunteers have done it for years, haven't they?
Yeah. Yeah, the geezers.
Well, thank you, ladies.
Yeah, the, very, very lingers there before I was. That's nice. Filling in when they didn't have an animal. It's our therapy.
I get it.
And we appreciate people like you that adopt. And then we needed some extra. They're working for days. They don't want to do or can't do and all that stuff, then I would have to do it anyway if they couldn't do it. So that's when I got the girls and they fill in and help. And now they just split the weekends. So. And then they don't have to do all the holidays.
Thank you, ladies. Moving on to staff reports.
Just wanted to see if you had read the memo I put in about the housing authority and if you had any questions about what we had talked about doing with the grant funds.
I, I don't have a lot of questions. I feel like that Sheila and the housing authority have done a really good job of being good stewards of those resources. And so if that's the recommendation, that's the direction.
Hopefully we'll get a lot more information. I think this, the grant writer, I think she wants to come in very, very soon.
Okay.
Appreciate all the work you do in housing authority. And they say what needs to be done.
Maybe you should take a tour before it starts and then a tour when it's over to see.
I've been in some of those.
Yeah. Are they going to do some or not? Those, that was, yeah, that's my hope. And it would be a good idea to get some right now, although we won't be starting anytime soon. But, you know, definitely.
It would be a shame to miss out on that opportunity because of that, not having that money available.
Yeah. It stopped Sheila's heart for a little bit when she found that out because we knew there was no way to do that, funds available there. And then she was told, no, you can't do it that way. You have to get a construction loan. And I said, well, I don't think a city can get a loan. And so she called back again and the woman said, I think we'll be okay. So I think that, I don't know if Kansas is different with everything. She's not familiar with some of the things that have changed or the things they've been told that way we have to do it. So I think it would be great.
I mean, really not, I guess the only risk that I could anticipate is that somehow the grant isn't for real.
It does seem too good to be true.
It's not like it's one of your Aunt Prince or anything.
Well, it is a better loan based. I hope it'll lay that's legit.
Didn't work, yeah. Seems like about once a quarter, I get a notification from a Canadian law firm that some member of the Lambert's family has passed away and they only need me to deposit so much money in order to really transfer whatever funds remaining.
Just gift cards and Bitcoin.
Other staff reports.
I have some stuff coming down from the EPA and K H E about lead and copper sample. We'll put together something and share it with you in a few weeks. My best person guidance of some sort. Going to have to survey households and stuff, so. Put it together, probably within a month or so.
So we could probably talk about surveying certain areas that would have been, the infrastructure would have been put down when those different materials would have been utilized.
The whole town.
Really?
So it'll be arduous.
Have you heard how invasive of a process or is that what this meeting is going to be as far as?
It's just asking what might be inside of houses.
I thought they were, so maybe I misunderstood when we read it because I thought you needed to take some samples on different properties or not.
Well, the inventory of the whole town is for the actual sample site plan. It used to be I had twenty different, twenty different sites that I would take. And now, what's the thing in Flint years ago, now they're wanting the whole town inventory? So I can't imagine what Wichita is going to do in these bigger cities.
Well, or even a city our size that maybe isn't as run as well as our town is. I mean, I think that that's, there's a lot of resources for that frankly other communities just don't have. So I do wonder what'll.
Yeah, we're going to try to tackle it ourselves. We have a year and a half.
Well, any of the work that we've done, mapping our system, I mean, can we use any of that data? Is any of that data applicable to this? Or would we be just running lines at that point just to see what they were?
Yeah, it's just to, just to see where things are. There's really no records of any sort.
Highly exploratory, huh?
What's that?
It's just the service lines that they want to know about. So.
Yes, just the service lines.
All of our mains are public mains. This is little options, every property. And there's, and there's three points that you have to look at.
Well, the service line, we're going to look in, we're going to look in the meter pits. Sure. And expose the service lines in the meter pits, but we have to look at our city side and the owner's side. And we'll have to look inside where it comes through the wall to actually see if that's what the material is. And then we'll have to kind of explore interior part a little bit.
This is coming down from the EPA and being administered by K D H E. So they're kind of, and I think you've been to three different meetings on it now and got information. And it seems like it expands a little bit more with everything that you post to.
Yeah, I was hoping going to these meetings, they would say, ah, never mind.
Oh, we're going to put the bill for doing it?
They said, K D H E said there was funding, but they, you know, every class that I went to said, don't rely on.
You did, you did put in a grant application for those funds though, in case there is, but we've got a plan as if we don't, we're not awarded.
Have they given you any guidance on after you check and ask to enter in someone's home? Would they? Because I think you're going to get a lot of people saying, no, you can't connect it. Right. Yeah, they, they basically said those would be an unknown. And that's one of the things you don't want is an unknown or because they consider that as a lead pipe. So those would be, those would be the ones that would be sampled anyway. So and the owners of the houses are the ones that take the samples. So guess what? It's probably going to happen. The samples are going to get taken.
So are you going to ask to go into people's homes or are you going to ask them to take the sample?
No, the owner takes the sample.
Oh, it sounds like they were coming in to check where the line is coming out.
That's phase one for the inventory to see where it's at. And then phase two, the ultimate goal is to get rid of any lead pipes.
Yeah.
And so then, in the meantime, or in addition to, he still has to have a sampling department. And if we list unknown on this huge spreadsheet that he has to fill out, then that's a required sample. So you want to get to as many no's as possible so that you can minimize the number of samples that you're relying on homeowners to take within a certain amount of time because we're required to try and get samples.
I have a strong feeling the government is going to come back and go, never mind. Because I don't see how they are going to turn around and go, well, now we expect these samples and they're going to expect a private citizen to do those samples.
I would, I would imagine the best guess that I have, being an expert in all things water, water, legal, oriented. I think it'd be good for us as a city to know what we have as a city and what's going into the, towards the house, right? Which I think we should be able to ascertain fairly readily, right? Like what's, what's going in the meter? That's what's going out of the meter. After that, being a homeowner's responsibility, you know, that we have an obligation as a city to take care of our stuff. And I appreciate that. But once it goes into the homeowner's part, that I don't know, that's not what's being said, but it would seem like, it would seem like putting our efforts towards those first two, first and foremost, and then buying as much time as we can on that, what actually is going on inside of the house.
We want, I want to send out a survey that the homeowner can just fill out themselves. To, because there's age of the house and what the interior makeup is. And, and, you know, they'll be able to tell, tell me what the pipe is coming through the wall. And that's basically, and maybe, maybe say, if you do this survey and send it back, there might be a discount under a lot of bill. You know, something like that. And that might be the only way that they'll do it.
Well, it's white because I painted it white.
Then he's very good and lucky.
I don't know. I could say that's copper. No, we have copper going into it, but I would imagine if you're going to get.
So if it's leather, they expect one to then replace that at their expense?
Yeah. I'm going to wish you the best of luck with that. When they said that, they said that would, would some about three years?
Yeah, I know.
So the inventory is due, it has to be done by mid October, twenty twenty-four. So that's going to come up.
Yeah, it's a way down the road. And I think we can, we can do, do that and get that inventory done relatively quick, I think. But it's just going to be time consuming.
Yeah.
And we're going to have every guy walking down the street with a shovel and looking at meter pits. By that time, hopefully we'll have a survey back and we know what houses we need to go into to look if they'll let us in. Most people let you in, just look at stuff, but.
So we'll keep you informed as we go along, make sure that we have your blessing for how we plan on doing this.
Yeah.
And then just for the general public that might be watching commission meetings, we do samples every year of our water already. We just have a smaller sampling pool.
It's still going to be twenty. So we did, I tell you, we take twenty samples, lead and copper samples a year. But it's been the same places for the last, when I was the way I was raised, it's been the same places for the last twenty years. And this is a way just to get a better representation of the city.
And that's probably a good thing to do. I mean, but, but also encouraged to know that we are sampling and we're not finding anything thus far that gives us cause.
And years ago, they, we couldn't pass a lead and copper test. We all had really high, high numbers in both. So we started putting in a phosphate and it is taking care of it. Over the years, we've been on, on three-year sampling cycles and back on one year. And we would have, have, have good three years in a row. So they put us on three years and then we have a bad year. It's just been back and forth, so.
And then you mentioned this morning that as you go out in those leaks, at least on the service lines on our side, we've replaced about twenty a year, twenty-five a year.
Oh, yeah. We have hundreds that have been replaced.
So we don't expect a major problem on our side of the meter for sure.
Right. You're not replacing the blood line. No. And we don't have, I've worked here twenty-five years and we have goose necks, which is a connection from the water main to the galvanize pipe. And it's so they could turn it whichever way they wanted. And I've found five of those in the last twenty-five years. So we just, if they were in there one time, they're gone. I mean, that was back in the thirties probably. So. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy. Happy hunting.
Well, explaining to the general population that you're going to be doing it over. I mean, you've got to tell them over and over so they can't say, I do what you do. Not going to let you in my house.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and those, those ones that they won't, they won't let you in their house. You just have to have two, two good faith efforts is what they say. So, and then we don't have to bother with anything more. To meet the inventory. Yes, to meet the inventory.
Any other staff reports? Moving on to Commissioner comments, Commissioner reports. Marsha.
The only thing that I did check after our last meeting about the datronics bill that we paid, that's for a yearly contract with that, that tronics that take care of the electronics at the plaza. That's what that was. Then this, this week, we got the bill for the repair of the screen. And it's a prepaid bill, prepaid service order part. So it's all taken care of now.
I guess I didn't look at what, what you were talking about last week. I'd already seen both of those bills. So I was assuming what you were talking about was the, the repair one. Yeah. So, yes, we've, we've had the agreement and.
I was approached by a downtown business owner and they asked, and this, this is, and it's entirely possible we've discussed this and it just is escaping me, about the ability to identify a parking spot in front of their business for short-term parking for like takeout or something along those lines.
I don't think we've talked about that. That's what we're going to go.
Okay. It seemed like something that was familiar and maybe makes sense. Whether that's a designated time that this, this parking spot is for ten, fifteen minute parking to pick up. We had designated some parking somewhere at one point.
Well, we talked about parking downtown on the streets at, like at night when they're, you know, you have to have a permit to park.
Okay.
Toby knows that probably because, you know, it has a permit. But the snow routes, I think, have caused some trouble because they remove their cars and then they have to tow them.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Yes, I don't, I don't know if it, it makes sense, whether that be in front of any of the restaurants or places where you can just run in and grab food or it would make sense to be able to do that. But I said I would ask about it.
Let us talk about it kind of more than we're that.
Seems like a timely, like from eleven to one, you know, the dinner hours rather than the whole.
Sure.
Because we don't have that much parking on Sixth Street. I'm glad we don't.
Yes. And I try to remind folks that complain about not being able to park right in front. It means that there's a lot of people doing business downtown and that's generally good for a community.
Unless they're employees that are parked in front of the business, which happens to.
I would, the first, the first job I ever had working at the mall and they would, there were consequences if we parked this side of the closed parking lot, that if we were found to be parking in the closed parking spots. I forget what the consequence was. A stern talking to, I'm sure, but when you're sort of parked away like this for pet owners, it's a no for you.
Right.
So. That's all I had. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go to executive session.
Coming with the city commission recess into an executive session for consultation with an attorney for information being privileged to the attorney client relationship exception K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two with Amy Lang and Justice Beryl defendants and to reconvene in the city commission's chamber at six fifteen.
So move by Commissioner Beldon, second by Commissioner Wentz to go into executive session for the aforementioned reasons. Hearing, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. No, I'm sorry.
Allow me.
No action was taken. This time I'd entertain a motion to return or to go into executive session for the same reason we went into executive session before, for a period of administration, being at six twenty-five. So. The move is second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
No action was taken. This time I'd entertain a motion to return or to go into executive session for the same reason we've been in the executive session before for a period of administration convening at six twenty five.
So.
The move and second is there further discussion hearing none on our favor say aye. Aye. All opposed same sign. Motion passes. No, I'm sorry.
Will be.
No action was taken. This time I'd entertain a motion to return or to go into executive session for the same reason we've been in the executive session before for a period of administration convening at six twenty five.
So.
The move and second is there further discussion hearing none on our favor say aye. Aye. All opposed same sign. Motion is adjourned.